I'm gonna recess right during the meeting. And I'll take a motion over to the call to hear it.
Summer.
I'll say I have a motion, a second motion to call to hear it now. Motion hearing.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, speaking.
Hi.
Oh, my, over, I, motion here.
Thank you.
Yep. Sorry.
Now you're up Jim. But it's gonna be. Okay.
Hi there. Uh, my name's Cole Cunningham, I work under John Rose and Randy and Pierre on this project. So, good review of your last time. We went over the court, went through. Uh, all that, so we're not gonna go through that again, but, uh, as we know, drainage district two is an open ditch, drainage district. Uh, comprises about thousand acres. And, uh, we found needs for repairs on significant portions of the length of the openings. And just as a reminder, um. Only, only laterals that your ground was on could be assessed, so you're not gonna be paying for, uh, person to utilize. Um, as we handed out today, we have an amendment, um, as discussed at the, with the previous part of this hearing before it was continued. Um, there's discussions of how to make the cost of the repair, uh, more digestible. And that was to separate the excavation from replacing the pipe. So doing the tree removal and excavation. One time and then doing the open pipe or doing the pipe about ten years later. Um, so here we have several cost estimates located here that you can see. Um, so we broke those down. Doing it all told, doing everything together, as was originally proposed. That came to about one point five million dollars or about a hundred and forty dollars per acre. Um, doing the excavation only, so that would be tree clearing and then also ex- uh, ex- excavation, any earthwork. Uh, that comes out to one point one million or a hundred dollars an acre roughly. And then, uh, we estimated for the pipe, doing that ten years down the road, we included. Cost estimates at two percent inflation and six percent inflation, just to give a, a rough idea of where that could end up. And those came out to five hundred ninety-five thousand and seven hundred sixty-five thousand respectively. And, um. As we discussed last time, uh, the drainage code is pretty clear that repairs pretty much have to happen. So, figured if anything, you wanna add to that?
Yeah. If there's any questions or comments. Discussion about. The proposal really. If you wait the ten years and fight the digits, ten years to invest or complain. For that pipe process, there wasn't slight increase in total cost. Um, if you go two percent inflation. About ten percent more total cost, product, total cost, of course, it's ten years down the road, so. Then six percent inflation, that's about twenty-five percent more total cost, but. It's ten years down the road, that's six percent inflation was a pretty high estimate probably. Yes, what's wrong with the old pipes? You said, look, they are, right? So we, we, when we, we, Cole and I surveyed it. With last summer. And we, we took a picture and we inventoried every pipe that we found along that. And there were several pipes that were rusted out. Or need a repair, they were crushed, they were smashed, there would be need a repair, we would replace the pipes as part of the project. Either now or in ten years' time.
So the estimate includes all of those pipes and then also, there's a, uh. Uh, what, a number, there's a buffer in there for pipes we may have missed during survey to show up because. Yes.
And can we see those pictures of those pipes?
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're in our file. Are you gonna replace them all or just one of their smashed? Just the ones that are in bad condition, you just replace the one for the day.
Could you go through one more time what triggered this? And not saying that it doesn't need to be cleaned and all that stuff, but what's the process again? As, as, uh, we're cleaning this and triggering this as opposed to other. You know, over the years, some pieces being cleaned out, what's the dollar amount or what's the formula for triggering all this? And, and who does it again? I mean, where was the catalyst for this? Again, if you could go over that.
So the, uh. For doing like spot repairs, I think it's fifty thousand dollars as the law currently stands. That the district can do by themselves any given year, no engineer has to get involved. Don't have to examine the entire drainage district. So districts can do spot repairs over that time. Uh, what happens here and how we get involved is if a petition is filed. That says, you know, we're lacking drainage or I think something needs to be done in the drainage district. And then the, uh, trustees, the board acting as the trustees feels that those repairs might be above that fifty thousand dollar threshold. Or whatever that exact dollar amount is, I'm not, I don't remember. Um, then we get asked to look at it. We examine the entire, the entire ditch because it operates as a system. And then, uh, that leads to the hearing processes, we, we file a report. Uh, we survey, we make a report, we file it, give it to the trustees. Um, and then we notify all, we, we're here at these hearings and did I miss anything?
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, can you tell me first of all, I wanna make sure I'm looking at the white reds. So isn't the loving and dangerous districts in improvement four sixty-eight, is that the law?
Yes.
Cause it was never disposed or anything. Um, from you guys or from you guys? So I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right.
Yeah, four sixty-eight.
I have some questions, but I won't go on. In here on four sixty-eight point six, number of petitioners required, it said it to. So if I remember correctly, we're going way back to that petition in April of two thousand and twenty or twenty-one. That started.
Nineteen.
Uh huh.
Jim?
Yeah.
Hey.
Jim's just gonna be available by phone if we need him. Jim's gonna be available by phone if we need him.
In twenty twenty-one.
Cause I'll be honest, I'm questioning the laws here, I don't think. You guys on the board up there are representing your constituents. You know, in a good way. So I'm really disappointed in the meetings some of these, and what you have done, and I don't, you notified us adequately. Or given us the proper stuff to look at. So I wanted to know, was that the petition that started all this?
Yes, that was the petition. It's hard to go into all Jim, since she's asked about the code. My understanding that four sixty-eight point six, was that's for the establishment of the district, though there was no district here at all. And then somebody said you want a brand new district, it would require two petitions to sign.
The petition was for a complaint.
Yes.
That complaint started. Roll.
Yes.
Now, in this forty, forty-six, eight point six, it says it's just for the affected area. How did that then go into the main ditch? Why did that get folded?
So the main dish, this is all one district. When they say they affected.
No, I, I wanna know how the main ditch got.
Yep, yep, so, so I think that was on lateral H was what that.
That's lateral H started.
And lateral H flows into the main open ditch. So if the main, if the lateral, if the main. Also has damage in it, it needs to be cleaned out. It is the outlet for DD, for, for branch eight, for lateral H. So, as part of it, to provide relief for drainage district, DD two lateral H. The main would have to be cleaned out as part of that. If you just cleaned out lateral H. And then the main still had silt in it. You're, you wouldn't have cleaned out the entire system, you'd still be. Having the main downstream of it would still be acting as a block for lateral H. So that's where it be, it becomes one system, yes.
So my question back to the supervisors, when this first happened. Did you try talking to the people involved in trying to get that solved rather than pulling in the engineers?
We, we had meetings on this before, and there's other things that have been happening, there's, there's been Beaver Dam problems on the main, appeared more towards Northwood. Um, pretty much refusal of the land. Landowner didn't want us to come in there and remove them, um.
You're supposed to, and you're on a Beaver Dam.
What's that?
You're supposed to on a Beaver Dam is terrible.
Well, we're supposed to, but he wasn't letting us in, he didn't wanna let us in there. He was arguing with us and not letting us in there and we finally did get in there and get them out, but. You're right, yeah, they have to be taken out.
Yeah.
Uh, you said we have to clean out the main because of H, but in your investigation, we said the. Investigation found the main open ditch full line to be out of the air designed full line for nearly its entire length.
Hmm, yeah, there's so, the main, I think, is like around five hundred and fifty stations. And we recommended, which is a hundred foot, each station's a hundred foot, we recommended repairs on four stations of it. There were spots. Like at right at the very beginning, there's about. Look at, there's about two, two feet of silt right there where there's trees. So it's more of a, and that extends up for. There's silt, uh, uh, in excess of a foot.
Well, in one place, it's nearly the whole line, and then the estimate is six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, thanks.
Hmm, yes.
Light a little bit.
Yeah, so it's, so there were spots where it was at or below flow, and there was a decent amount of it. What is that, the a hundred and fifty stations of it? That are at a little frame line, and then, and overall, it didn't look. Compared to other ditches we've seen, it was in better shape than other ditches. Um, the reason it ends up being so much is it's a big ditch, so it's, it's a wide bottom. And it's long. So it ends up, even if you only have a two footer, two a silt on it, the bottom, if you've got a. Twenty-four foot wide bottom, that ends up with quite a bit of dirt, and they get, I mean, it's bid by Cubic Yard. So we estimated that three dollars a cubic yard to remove it.
It's just, we're gonna move the trees out of all the area, and then if there is an actual issue with drainage. You're able to get in there and clean the spots that need cleaning instead of doing, you know, a hundred percent of everything. I haven't heard anybody's having drainage issues out our way.
Hmm. So, we do, we are recommending clearing all the trees within the right of way.
And I wouldn't be against clearing all the trees, but since, I really don't have heard anybody say we've got drainage issues out our way.
And then once you're there. You clean out the silt when you're there, instead of just clearing all the trees, if we've found that there's two feet of silt. We recommend cleaning that out as part of it.
But if it's not causing an issue, why would we?
We've been dry the last couple of years too, you know, that could be partly why you have an issue. Um, and yeah, when it's. That wide, that's large of a ditch, it's got two feet of silt in it. You know, you as an individual maybe living. Half mile off the ditch, wouldn't see an issue with it, but we, I would bet we'll find pipes that are buried. We did clean it out, the tile outlets that are below. Below water, below the dirt.
So the, the other half of the walnut, I have no, uh, problems about drainage and clearing, clearing things out, okay? But what I do have a problem with is the formula, where you stated it was fifty thousand dollars. So if you have four landowners with ten acres. And it's gonna cost fifty thousand dollars, you can put economic hardship. On all the other landowners, uh, ones with a hundred and fifty, two hundred acres, two hundred and fifty acres. Because of these four small guys or one guy with forty acres, he can, that's part of the law, right?
Yes, that's right, yeah, as a, as a member of a drainage district, everyone has a right to file a petition. Even if you are only on one acre. You have the right to file it too, yes.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question, as far as a petition that has two signatures, how does that hold up to a petition that has, has over a hundred? And we're looking at the same issue, whether two or whether it's not two.
Need Jim.
In terms of the hundred people who signed opposed the project? Okay, so yeah, it's a repair. Far with objection to that repair. Isn't. And then I, they're required to keep it, it's a safe law.
Is this all repairs or is there, is there any improvements in this project, improvements?
It is, no, it's just.
There's no improvements, you aren't modifying it, except your original book, your mind, is modification, is that an improvement?
At part, my mind is. Of course, there's a greater best fit. But it is still, we're trying to follow design grades. We will, as part of it, we always do, it's standard for every ditch clean out. You clean it out six inches below the design grade, and the idea is that as you're working. You're stirring up the dirt, it's gonna end up at the end being level, these level of design grade. But that, it is not intended to be below the design grade. And it was dug in nineteen oh five, five, yes. Or if there was any improvements in the, beyond that, which I believe there was one in the nineteen fifties, there's an improvement. We would go back to that grade.
Oh, I wanna go back to the statutes again. Um, I wanna go back.
Hi Jim, this is Val, Worth County.
Um, we're looking. Six eight point two four.
Yeah, I'm gonna put you on speaker, we've got people having questions about, uh, the codes.
Section four sixty-eight point two four, and if you look at.
Okay.
Six eight points and four. This is the auditor shall appoint three appraisers to assess damages, one of whom shall be an engineer. And two stakeholders of the county shall not be interested or non-related to any person interested in the proposed improvement, and they. Said a pres should take and subscribe and go examine the premises, was that done?
So that, that, we leave the sections referring to right of ways, for the angle of right of way. Which this district went through that right of way process in two thousand and nineteen, and that was done at that time.
I've got Jim on speaker here, so.
I can't hear anything, Val.
Okay.
Sure, if there's a question, have Jacob repeated or you?
Yeah, they were talking about code four six eight point six. Point two, two four.
Three. Yeah.
Four six.
Four point eight, six two four.
Yes, and two three.
And two three.
Well, what does that have to do with today?
Nothing.
So it was a question, can I think about where was Jim, I don't have it.
Yeah, is the code about right of way?
That section about right of way.
Quote, four sixty-eight point two four.
Correct.
Has to do with right of way? What's the question regarding right of way here?
I guess my question is, did we get the actual bits that?
Maybe have Jacob tell me what his understanding is of the question.
She's asking why, uh, just one, why one engineer was appointed as opposed to the point two disinterested owners.
Can you hear Jacob?
No, sorry, Val.
The question was. Was, um. The, her question was, what was it that, why, why do we just hire one engineer and not hire two? Other landowners to meet with the engineer to, to write the engineer's report, just disinterested landowners. Maybe you wanna explain how right of way is different than engineer's report?
Well, that code section relates to acquisition of right of way.
Can everybody here, okay, can everyone hear that? Okay, he's saying that that code section refers, refers to the acquisition of right of way.
What for?
Points the right of way raisers, which consists of an engineer and two disinterested landowners. Disinterested landowners are landowners that don't own land in the district, but own land in Worth County. They form the, uh, the, uh, appraisers. And they make their report back to the board. And then the board conducts a hearing on acquiring the, uh. Easement. Or the right of way. And what the district acquires is a permanent easement for right of way. And the drainage district has exclusive, exclusive control of. That right of way, just the same way as the, uh, board supervisors has exclusive control. Over road right of ways. Throughout Worth County, County roads. And the, uh, the supervisors have exclusive control over that. I can't plant corn in the road ditch. Harvest it. And, but I do get. Land that is, when it's a longer drainage ditch. The land from the toe of the ditch back out into the field is called the spoil bay. And the code provides that at the discretion of the supervisors. The adjoining landowners. Have permissive use of the spoil bay. They can use it for anything you want, but if a drainage, uh, district repair or improvement or management. Or spraying or anything comes around, we have to be able to work around what the landowner has done.
Jim, I'm gonna add on here, so situations where appraisers are involved, to my knowledge, that's just right of way acquisition and. Classification or reclassification, correct?
Uh.
Or two disinterested landowners.
The, the classification and reclassification is done by commissioners. And the commissioners are appointed by the board. The appraisers do the right of way acquisition. And make a report, and those people are appointed by the auditor. There's a little difference.
Now, this district, we did right away in two thousand and nineteen, so we went through that process in two thousand and nineteen. And I don't remember who the two, two disinterested landowners were. I don't, I don't remember. But we did go through. But we did go through that process, we also, in two thousand and nineteen, went through the reclassification process, was what Cole was talking about.
There's.
So I have this parallel there.
And there were hearings held for those events, I remember, I think there was a bully, that would leave you there. You, you saw it.
Yeah. The late class.
They were, they weren't as well attended as these, it was funny, we did have a right of way during that, and a reclassification.
So you followed the proper procedure to get where you are today.
Maybe have them go over. Who can? Ask for.
Yes, Jim, so who could ask for a, you have two petitioners signed, or can it just be?
No.
One, one landowner, or could it be the supervisors themselves, who explain that process?
Anybody can. All of the landowners in the district just takes one landowner to file a petition. And that triggers an investigation and report by an appointed engineer. And then that culminates in a hearing. Now, in order to get to a repair, depends on the size of it. That can be triggered by a landowner just telling a supervisor. And it can be triggered by a supervisor driving by and seeing that there's a need. And that can trigger an investigation and looking into it. Jackie has guidelines that were developed some years ago as to when you need. Uh, an engineer, as to when you need a hearing. And when you do, you know, a repair. I went too far than what your question I asked.
So with, the four sixty-eight point six, when it says would be two for the, I think, for just the establishment of the district.
That is only to establish a brand new drainage district that takes two landowners. And the district is not established at that point in time. So that's the only time two landowners are required.
So where in here am I not looking at the right stuff?
Two hundreds. Your repair section, subsection, two hundreds for repair, right, Jim, do you remember which section, right, for repairs?
Um, one point six.
One twenty-six, four sixty-eight. This is a part of, we're talking about repairs. They all talk about improvements, that's second.
Both.
If part is agreeing to any, uh, private.
So these, yep. Not that we're working on, there's only, there's only the two that we're working on, there's, there's six sub-districts, pile districts also that bring in two. And none of those are good. This one is only for D two. And there's no private facility, we don't, either.
Are you talking like open dish Brian or big main lines?
Creating that Brian with towards right up next to Shell Rock.
A little H.
Oh, you mean like right outside of Northwood here? Um, it doesn't go all the way to the Shell Rock.
No, it goes, just on the, just on the east side of Mallard. You know, where that's at. I believe that becomes a creek, yeah, I've seen it, yes.
Yeah.
So there's, there's two things, you got dollar amount and petition to trigger this, it's not necessarily a dollar. It's a petition and our.
Triggering the engineering, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's dollar, definitely dollar amount that does trigger, there is definitely a dollar amount that triggers.
But it, a petition, just because somebody says, I wanna get this cleaned out, um. And it's gonna be fifty-one thousand dollars doesn't necessarily mean, the formality has to be gone through as far as a petition.
Yeah.
Being signed, correct?
You technically don't need a petition, you, you technically could just have the board supervise.
They used to be clear.
It looks bad, uh, we're gonna hire.
Okay, so, how does the petition hang in, hang on this then, what, what does that have to do with anything?
Jim, can you, can you hear that, Jim? What is the?
Yeah, what bearing, what bearing does it have to do if it, if it really isn't necessary?
Well, repairs can be triggered in any way. That we've talked about, and the reason is, is because repairs are mandatory. So once the board becomes aware that a facility needs repair. The board can just on their own order repairs, or they can hire an engineer to go look at and give them. Advice. So, but anytime a petition is filed, is there a petition in this situation?
Yes, there was a petition on lateral H.
Okay, once a petition is filed. Then, that, that, the, the whole wheel of, uh, the code beginning to work. It circles back to where the code starts in two thousand, now, let's see, just. Four sixty-eight point eight, maybe is an initial petition with two landowners. Well, what the code does is clear out into section one twenty-six, it circles on back, and it goes through all that procedure. When a petition is filed, the board is required by statute to hire an engineer. The engineer is required by statute to go out to make a survey and an investigation. File a written report with the board. When the board receives the written report, they're required by statute to set a hearing on that report. To determine whether or not to move forward. That's what you're doing today, is a hearing on that report. You have the initial report and amended report to kind of do this in stages. And today is the hearing on that. But the code, um, it's very confusing, it circles back to the start of the code. But it ends up later on into the code, it just doesn't go one, two, three, four, five, six.
So Jim, to get directly to the question, the, the petition is more of a formal request to the, to the trustees as opposed. You could just ask the trustees, or the trustees could just decide themselves, but the petition is a, is a formal request.
That's correct.
So that the petition, in this case, that, I'm just trying to hang this all together, the petition. Is what set the wheels in motion on this, it wasn't because Mark Schmady went out and said, we got a major cleanup to do here. That was none of it, it was the petition that was the catalyst. We got a major cleanup to do here. That was none of it. It was the petition that was the catalyst for this, correct?
That's right. The petition starts it, but the contents of the petition have absolutely nothing to do with what will be done.
Of, of course not, but it.
Be done is determined by the engineers.
Yes.
If the supervisors brought the engineers in, would the supervisors have handled it themselves? But.
If they were required, I should have looked at it and said it's under fifty thousand, you know, yourself.
No, I'm, I'm saying when the petition was filed. That the supervisors.
An engineer is never a bad idea.
My question is, when a petition was filed. Was it the supervisor's responsibility to talk to those people on that petition? To see if they could settle the matter then, without pulling in the engineers? I, I don't care about engineers coming in and out. I just wanna know, like Doug, back to day one, could this have been settled back then?
Did, did you hear that, Jim? She asked me, could, could the supervisors have went out and looked at the petition, talked to the petitioner? And said, we'll come to the agreement on this without getting it more involved than it.
Because the code says when a petition is filed. Then the board of supervisors shall. Hire a competent engineer. The competent engineer, engineer shall make an investigation and shall make a written report. Then once the report's made, the board shall set a hearing date and notify the landowners and bring them in. So the finding of the petition triggers that activity by statute. If somebody just comes up to one of the supervisors in the hallway and says. We got some, um. Sandbars in the ditch. He could look at that, and if, if you don't need any more engineering to that, you don't need. A lot of engineering to, to determine the sandbar needs to be removed.
I have just one more question.
There can be triggered in a number of different ways.
So, yep. So the petition, why would there be a petition if somebody could just go up on lateral age and say, I need this done? Why the petition? What's, what's the legalese on that?
Cause nobody knows what the law says. We're used to dealing with petitions. The whole code has been established since nineteen oh five. And from day one, it, it, it needed something in writing. In the auditor's office to get to the board to move forward with things. There's also a provision in that one twenty six that you were looking at that says, if there's an emergency. The board just can order repairs done without any hearing or any engineer or anything. Um. I don't wanna go down off into bunny trails on purpose, but.
So Jim, if. If a petition or a request could be made to the trustees and the trustees. If they, if they refuse to do the repair. The petition, as, as my understanding, the petition acts as something formally in writing. That they can go back and they can take to a court and be like, I requested this repair. Nothing, it was not acted upon, therefore it needs to happen. Is that correct?
Not at that stage. Along, along the path, if petition is filed and the engineer recommends a repair. The board can't refuse to give a repair. Now a landowner, it's, it's the only rare instance that a drainage district can be sued. Now a landowner in that district, the board refuses to make a repair based upon an engineer's recommendation. They, and that's a final decision at a hearing. Then they can appeal that final decision within twenty days to district court. And the district court will hear that issue. It's the only time a drainage district can sue.
It goes back in the first petition, whoever, whatever. Did that cost more than fifty thousand dollars?
That was the first petition. Yes, it would have for lateral age. I can't remember what we've got for estimating for lateral age.
Yeah, but the petition, they just wanted to clean something out. That's more than fifty thousand dollars for the supervisor, the, the board to. Could have spent fifty thousand and not go through you guys and now.
Look, let me address something which I think is part of what this is asking. The landowner doesn't determine the scope of the repair. That is determined by the engineer who's required to go and do a survey. On an open measure, the survey needs to talk to the landowners. And do an investigation and then make a report. So it's the engineer that determines the scope of the repair that needs done. Keep in mind that it's required by law that drainage district facilities be kept in a good state of repair. A repair means maintained or restored in the original design efficiency. An original design. Um. I'm sorry, the word is escaped. Original design efficiency and original design capacity.
So if it was under fifty thousand. This, the board could have stopped from hiring you guys.
Right, right.
That the original petition here, it says, okay, the petitioners, all they wanted done was. Clean out, remove structure roughly thousand feet, which isn't way under fifty thousand dollars. I mean, this could have been done. Without going.
I think how Jim read the code is any repairs that are brought, you have to have an engineer hired.
That's the most petition.
It's under fifty thousand.
Everybody wants to make it happen with fifty thousand. That used to be ten thousand, then twenty thousand, then it's fifty. Now it's up to a hundred and thirty six thousand.
So the, the issue is that the petition requires the board to hire the engineers. If you submit a petition, the board has to hire the engineers to do the survey. They don't have a choice. They have to do that by code.
Did they look at the person immediately?
It doesn't matter if they looked at it. They were, there was a petition submitted. They have to do it.
The whole body.
No, they have to hire the engineers to look at. The engineers have to do their job to investigate the whole situation. It's a system. It's not just a single ditch. Engineers are required by their code of ethics to look at the whole thing. And so. So.
Why do supervisors not notify the landowners saying, hey, we got this petition. This is gonna start the ball going, getting the engineers. This could cost money too. Did not let us spell.
Excuse me, I do like, we have, we have the reclass hearing and the right order in two thousand and nineteen. That was working on, um, that was why we did the last revision. Prior to, prior to the work, we didn't know scope necessarily at that time. But then we did undertake a potential. You know, so.
Not yet. That's what this hearing is for, is to determine what action to take based on the recommendations of the engineers. So the engineers are making this recommendation and now the board has to make a decision on what to do with that recommendation.
Well, why recommendations? It stops right down. And so we just, didn't do this going.
Who have they say? I mean, basically. At this meeting, we're, you're telling us what's gonna go on. We got ninety, ninety-five percent of the people have got to pay the bills on this thing that do not wanna do this. But some law that they made down the state says, tough shit. You guys gotta do it. We have no say. This thing is a total waste of water. It's all. Not tried before we got here. I don't even know what we're even doing here. Because you're explaining to us what's gonna happen. We have no say and we gotta pay all the bills. It's just a bunch of bull.
All right, let's get involved here, but. I've been in about three or four other districts, not just this one here, other landowners. And, uh, fifty thousand, I understand, it's being twenty thousand, um. Why? Why, then they were out of, out of order. Our, our supervisors were out of order. They, they, they were doing things illegally. But the object was we kept it under the, the bulk of fifty thousand, ten, twenty, thirty thousand. What's changed here? Somewhere along the line, we were, I was land, a lot of us were let down a path there.
It wasn't.
That we were to start here. Representative right, by our people that we like to hear directly. They are positive for this.
Gordy, you know, mine, um. We're on both sides of fence here at all times.
I understand that. No, you didn't send her out to your, um, um, two years ago, ten years ago. I've been involved in other school districts before, that school district, every drainage district. Before, why wasn't this law enforced then?
It's always been enforced.
Now it hasn't been enforced. I've been on, on two or three other drainage districts. You can ask Jackie, she's looking up on the records.
I'm here to say, but anyways, Gordy, the thing is, if, if you guys have an issue, somebody comes to us. And we don't do nothing about it, we get our butts chewed.
I know that.
Why didn't they do it? Why didn't we try to do something about it? Get our butts chewed. So, this is not a fun place to be.
I know that, but why did, why, all of a sudden now we decided to do it? How come ten years ago we had to go through all this process?
It should have been done in early two thousand.
Not this project. I'm talking about other drainage stations, I mean.
They all go by the code.
So I don't, I don't think any million and a half or million plus dollar projects have been slid under like that, Gordy, but. So some of the smaller ones, very possible. You're right, but, uh. Not one this big.
Why did it get this big?
Well, I'll just give you an example, regardless of probably what's going on here right now, that ditch is unscheduled to be sprayed this year. And we would get a recommendation from the spray guy that says those trees are too big. So we would have to take a look at this anyway, look at, get the engineer involved and get those trees removed. We had one similar to that two years ago. Spray guy come in and says, I can no longer spray. The trees are too big. I'm not gonna be able to manage them. So we went ahead and contacted a couple of people that gave us bids on it and it came in under the fifty thousand dollars. Just to cut them down and remove them all, burn them, bury the, everything. And then the spray guy will come back in two years and start to manage those trees. That's one that would have fallen just under the threshold. We were able to do it that way. This one would no way, any way, we could try that, but it cutting the trees and removing the trees, it's not gonna even come close to the. Fifty thousand dollars or even probably the two hundred thousand dollars where I think it's where it's at now, repairs and engineering, isn't it? There's a new threshold, January one, I'm not exactly, it's one ninety something, ain't it? Yep. So.
The genie's out of the bottle, so I mean, you guys have to do what you have to do. That's the law. That's what I, I've just been educated on this, that you need to petition or, uh, your state.
Or action.
Senators and senators and get this law that's been on the books since nineteen oh five, if I heard correctly. To get that changed, that way you guys can sit there and go back and say, hey, look, this law has been changed. It's no longer the way. It was explained to you. I mean, so ten years from now, if trees get out of control or this or that happened. I don't wanna revisit this and I don't want somebody coming with their forty acres or ten acres and going. Oh, well, this triggered it because they signed a petition. No, there's a different formula now. That's what I get educated.
You need the numbers for legislators, I have.
You're right, it's legislators who, if you wanna change the way that it's, you know, it's not. Spend up what you can without having to go through all these hoops.
Yep.
In, in a few successive years and they create the project to stay as that way. Maybe keep it under two hundred thousand for two or three years and you get ninety percent of the project done. And don't have this million point five. Bill sitting over again. That'd be a whole lot more practical solution to this than what we're talking about right now. Where do you want us to start? Take the trees. Take the trees out. Sure that actually saves you anybody because you end up being assessed it. Well, we, we wouldn't see, we wouldn't be paying you engineer, engineering for, for a lot of, a lot of work. That'd be one saving. That just, that would be, that would be. What's gonna break down, really, it's, it's, it's gonna cost eventually, but it's gonna cost at a rate that's affordable. And it's an agreement, the trees all need to be removed and it's gonna be, that's affordable for everybody. Is that what I'm hearing? Step in the right direction. We gotta start somewhere, right? Let's start there. And then don't take any silt out anyplace. As long as you're not having, I just wanna know, getting water out, take care of the trees first.
So AJ, in some places, we have been working on trees.
Yep.
And I'm asking, you know, once we get those trees down, we need to. Make sure we've got a maintenance schedule in place, so that as you mentioned. Paying because I've been looking at where we've taken these trees down. I've been looking at. Where these beavers are still working. I've been trying to get beavers trapped. And. It is what it is. It's a continual process that I'm sure has been going on since nineteen oh five or whatever.
Yep.
And, uh, you know, it's, it is continual. It's not just the silt. I, I mean. You can do what you wanna do, but if you, if you've still got the trees and the underbrush and everything there. You've got all the materials that these beaver need to build dams and homes and. Everything else under the sun and then the silt builds up and.
Yep. It's, it's already in the program. We do, we're trying to assert the town.
Yep.
Here.
So that, yeah, for three years, your ditch is getting sprayed. Um, so it's already in the program. We just kind of remove the trees that are too big to spread. And there's some good sized trees in there. If that's what we need to do, if that makes you guys happy, you all agree with that. But that's just a step we take for now. We have ten years on this report. We've come back in three, four years and say, is everybody still happy? We can just have this done. But we've gotta start somewhere. We've gotta keep it in decent repair, you guys. That's, we don't have a choice because. The next go around, if we say no, and somebody's pissed at us, then we're in court. We don't wanna be there. We'd like to be right here, get it figured out, get done what we can and not put too much of a burden on you guys.
The repairs are mandatory. We can just, it just help already spread them out. So, Rover, you, I understand your point that you're sitting on this board and wanna try and please everybody on both sides. Next person's to Mark. Mark said just a little bit ago that. All the ins and outs and legality of this stuff, did you understood why we can't do this? Why was it that I went and talked to you one on one, to your place, your farm? And if you understood this good, why didn't you tell me the conclusions at this time that you knew all this stuff? Evidently you did, because if you did, you would have told me.
Yep, well, I had to find out. I mean, you, you wanted it done, but. I, I, absolutely. I will take full blame for it, Gordy, if that's what you want.
Well.
I.
Be, be the scapegoat. And you, you guys sit up there.
So I'm, I'm trying to explain, I'm trying to explain that you're not the only person involved. There's been a lot of issues with this ditch that have been brung before us. And we needed to act on it. Not just your issue, there's several issues. Go ahead.
I, I just wondered if we talked to, the representatives and got the law changed within the next ten years, you know, say you did the trees. Like, is this, or is this already in motion? It can't be stopped? Or if the law got changed, would be like, all right, we can cut it out.
That would probably be like saying, okay, now that they've raised the threshold, could we come in under that for engineering? The answer would probably be no. It'd probably be. However, the project was started when the law was the law. I'm, and I'm not a legislator.
Right.
Think that a law that was in place when it got started or whatever.
Would just come through.
Be the one.
Be kind grandfathered in.
There was a, there was a question on if the law gets changed, let's say two years from now. That.
Could we look at?
The threshold for repairs is higher or.
Or just the way that it gets brought, you know, like if it's a boat.
Let's say a boat where you got like a school, school bond issue or something.
So I did, I'd probably say there was a vote to the district. A lot of things never should done.
But this one, because it was filed before that, you enter the old system, current system, or in that new system.
Disagree.
Threshold by when you move forward with projects, not when the petition is filed. But you can't just ignore the petition. You know, to keep changing the threshold, if you, if you delay. You know, to keep changing the threshold, if you, if you delay this a number more years. Maybe you'll come in under the threshold again. But you've still got all this procedure leading up to that point. I don't think the legislature will come in and retroactively. Change the law to relate back to now. That's very rare to do something like that. And there's no good reason to change it back retroactively. Everybody in the room needs to keep in mind that this drainage law has worked very well since nineteen oh five.
It doesn't get changed at our level. We just have to interpret it.
Just the trees are, it was about. We had slightly eighty thousand of the century. Or no, eighty five, something.
See, the, the way I look at it is if you go in for, your car is, it has a knock in it. And they said, they tell you, well, you could add a quart of oil. But we recommend a full oil change. And you're like, well, a quart of oil, do it? Yeah. All right, well, let's, let's do the cheaper option. I mean, it just makes business sense. For us as landowners and for you guys too, as far as how can we make this, it needs to be done. And I don't think there's any question what I've been listening to on this, but how can we make this less painful for everybody instead of just going? Hey, sorry, you gotta, you gotta pay a hundred and twenty, thirty thousand dollars. Tough luck. I mean, that's the thing, the, the, the economic hardship. That's being put on some people and, you know, you guys can go about and do your business and everything. Doing, you know, the recommendation is correct or the dollar amount is correct, but it's like, what about these people that? Hey, I might have to sell this ground because I can't pay this. You know what I mean? That's. Yeah, yeah, I heard that.
I agree with, with that. You're forcing people to sell their land that.
Well, I didn't, I mean, it could, could happen.
Yeah, so in looking through your engineer. Numbers, I was looking at the total of fifty seven thousand on mobilization.
Yeah, and that's.
I was looking at that number, say mobilization.
Yeah, that's standard. It's state two dots, five, five percent of total construction cost is for mobilization. It's just a, it's, you pay for it either way, just a hundred.
But if the project were split up, whatever.
There'd be mobilization every time.
Mobilization several times. So like, when I said eighty five thousand, I. Uh, very roughly, that didn't count, they would still get paid mobilization. So probably go under.
Yeah.
A hundred thousand, probably, if you look at that. Cause there's also little other little companies, like a promotion made at the plant. That's a pretty mighty posse, that's. Yeah.
That almost.
If they spill, if they spill oil, they're slacking. And probably a few other. Kind of things that are.
And we're still responsible for the ninety thousand that they sent for. What you guys think that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's already. Then with that house and battery boards, let's give it ten years. So we can go back and raise the report, look at it five years down the road and say. You guys prepare to clean the ditch or fix the pipes or whatever. My recommendation was gonna be that we just start with trees and. And we, we'll get it done. We just. Might take us a little time.
So.
Just fix the, fix the pipes and get wrecked while you're digging trees.
Yeah. That's.
Enos, was there a report back in the year two thousand? I know it's expired, but did you find that? Or whatever.
We were told, we were told that. I don't know.
A report back in two thousand?
Yeah.
My basement archives looking. Last evening and I think it does exist, but.
You said about two thousand?
Yeah, supposedly. That was the kind of data when somebody said that this whole thing was lined up.
An email from somebody at Land Hall. This thing set up ready to go.
Yeah.
We did the first project.
Yeah.
Which was like a hundred and five west of Mallard.
Yeah.
All the way out where it's out there.
For the true.
On the west side of the casino and then the second part, starting at Mallard, rolling the one oh five, never got done.
But I couldn't find all of the exacting stuff because I was looking at some things that were dated ninety five. But maybe I needed the dig in a different place, is all I can say. I mean, I'm trying to work through Ohio records that my mother had very. Meticulously kept together, but here to kind of interject this, she passed away on May twenty fifth of twenty twenty. So our land ownership actually changed after that. But with due diligence, we've been trying. To remedy and work with and whatever. The reclassification and, and all of that. So we kind of got caught. About the same time period as what reclassification was going through and then. Finding that, yeah, we need to get some work done here and it is what it is. But I, I did, I did look last evening. And tried to find some of the same records that I think. They do exist.
So board meeting on March twenty seventh of two thousand, I see that bids were submitted for ditch clean out of D D two, main ditch. Um, so bids were from Pop Excavating. LJ Volden. And Rognis.
Volden.
Volden, okay. And then Rognis. So maybe if I go back before that. And, and those were in the ninety thousands. In two thousand, so.
So most of the guys got some pasture along this drift, you know, it's gonna treat, it'll be taken out and they got fences. Who's responsible for whose? Your landlord is responsible for moving his fence before we come in anymore. And their response, and their response will come back. They have to go back. Like the right, which is the only area that we're part of. So Jacob, that peaceful, anything?
Yes, I think that would make a motion.
Well. Yeah, everybody's getting legalese, but yeah. Is there anything else?
So when the next phase comes after the trees, will you notify us so that we can all get together and see what's next?
Yes. That's how we're.
So normally you wouldn't see the bill at all. Being reclassified this district ahead of time, you have an option of seeing what it's gonna cost. Normally. Normally, yeah, it's a big surprise. If you go off the old classification, you run off the old classification, some, some people's bills would have been higher or lower. And the new classification have changed it, but it gives us ability to, when we do do a project. We have more, more accurate cost of what it's gonna cost.
Well, I appreciate that. That means you're looking out.
And usually, typically before the meetings, when I. So typically before the meetings, when I send out the letters, if I have the reports already, like I put in the letter. Because the, the, to mail those reports are huge. So I say you could contact the auditor's office and then they're also posted online. So if you do have internet access, you can go to the drainage website and then we post those reports. I could do that. Yep.
So, so what are you proposing then, you guys?
We can't, we're still in. We're still in public hearing. Ready for that. Okay. I just wanted to share, everybody's got to do sense.
I would say what's being proposed or being asked is that we look at this, doing this project over ten year period, which I think. It's gonna cost the same or more over the ten years regardless. It's just whether. You know, we wanna eat it, it's one of the things.
E T said earlier in this, we'll just do the trees, maybe. Uh, what about the original petition? I didn't bring that up, but. What are you gonna do with that?
That.
That's a structure. The, the reason that got put on the engineer, in my opinion, is that it's a structure. You start removing structure, why is that structure there? Who put it there? Is there a reason? That's above our pay grade. That's what we have to say.
That's where we have an attorney.
Uh, what do you guys think? Does that? So that's structure. I do know that when we did our reclassification, we did it with that structure in there and everyone upstream of that structure got a reduction in the assessments. Because that's, so if we did remove it. So I was, I don't remember exactly how much of a difference would be, would lead to a. Well, I mean, the natural idea is if you remove it, then you would thin out the ditch upstream of that to match the downstream. You wanna do that as part of it. Yeah, that's the whole reason for why you have. Dig a structure out as you would dig out upstream of it. Which that would be considered an improvement. And those landowners on that assessment, they should have their own assessment schedule. It's upper H. Set schedule, they will all get annoyed in the scenery. We could do that. There's interest in that. And they would get a vote if they wanted to. And we bring everyone to here, we'd have the cost pretty much already. Or it would just be another letter of port. And that would just be the landlords and upper. Upper, upper H, yes. I can't remember how much of a. How much. Lower it was, several feet. Far as that area concerned? It's about six feet.
You're gonna have to lower the bridge underneath the interstate and do. Everybody above it. So what good is it gonna do the ones above it?
So.
You aren't gonna get that changed.
The cost to, to the interstate will lower. They are required by law. If we, if we, the range district or drainage district wants to lower a facility, they're required by law at their expense. Drainage districts are more powerful than the D O T.
That's something new.
In a bad.
You know that one.
That structure was removed and lowered at the interstate, that would greatly improve the drainage.
They probably would put in just a supplement. They'd probably leave that one and put another one, or one lower, so they don't have to tear the whole thing out. But it would be their, their cost and they would have to go along with whatever landowners. And the drainage district wanted to, so there's no, they don't have any option to fight it.
So the landowners. Make the requirements that they have to do at their cost? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying DOT has to make that, make that their, their cost. The lower, lower underneath the interstate.
Just like secondary roads does, I mean.
Two hours.
The what?
Two hours, the drainage district engineers.
Who then? It's Sebastian. Is that what you're saying?
I mean, so you would pay the engineering cost for that, for us?
You just said that DOT would take it in charge. What are you, then when you give that cost to you?
No, no, I'm saying that we would be in charge of the design of it. And that they would have to do it. Basically the same situation with the county road right away. We got, we have the county secondary roads that are past the pay for all those crossing the that bridge as well. DOT is nobody, and that paid their share. So that's a whole different. Hearing. Different long game. If we go into upper H. That just includes the people on that lateral. That would be a separate hearing, separate discussion. And if that needs to happen, Jacob said that's an improvement. That's when the landlord, you can talk about it. There's a remorse against it. That's where your petition comes in to stop them. But if you guys are fine with it now, leave it. It's, it would be an improvement. If you want it out, have that discussion and we can, we can set up a hearing and we can do this all over again with just that number. Anybody else?
I will take a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
I hate to speak at public meetings, but I do wanna, I don't know who this Jim is. But I have learned a lot. Cause my husband always did this and I didn't have to do anything. And just by listening to him and by just coming to meetings, I've learned a lot. And I wanna thank him for that because it's very informative. And I appreciated that and I've appreciated the knowledge. That he shared. I've learned a lot. One of the things I learned and might as well get it off my chest is that if I make an, if I ask for something to be done, by law, it needs to be done. And a while ago, quite a while ago, because Danny died ten years ago, but. I asked for a place to be fixed. It was a Worth County tile. And no one did anything. No one did anything. I called the supervisor's office. No one did anything. So I went to my first meeting and I explained that. So I, I've forgiven all that. I can't go back. You can't do anything about it. But I, I didn't know that. And so that was really good to know. That I had a right that I could ask. And no one did anything. And when I asked one of the supervisors and you guys, I don't think, I think Mark was here, but nobody else was. Spoke up and said, well, you asked the wrong guy. You asked the wrong person. And I thought. Well, that's just ridiculous. I called the supervisor's office. So it took. Visit. I actually hired Rognis to fix it myself.
He turned the building in then.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
I, I paid ten thousand dollars to have this place fixed. Because I couldn't get anyone to come. No one answered. Doug just said it's because you're a woman, but I don't, you know, I think that's pretty petty, but I.
It shouldn't have been.
I, I just, I needed to get that off my chest. So I sat through a few of them. Now I want that Jim, wherever he is and wherever he is. To know that I have learned a great deal and I appreciate it.
It's Jim Hudson, a poker artist. Did you hear that, Jim? I'll, I'll call you.
Was there a question?
No. It was a compliment.
You got a compliment, Jim.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
Is there anybody else with any comments or on Zoom with any comments?
Uh, nobody on Zoom has comments that I can see, but.
Then I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Uh huh. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Roll call vote, stone, aye. Maybe.
Aye.
Over, aye. I'll reconvene in a regular meeting. You're just gonna figure it out. Let's start with the trees. Let's get the trees cleaned out. Step one. We'll see if anything else arises in the next three, five years. Maybe a different group sent at this table, may have been. Um, but that's my recommendation alone, which. Yeah, if anything gets ruined, obviously in the process of taking trees.
Or there's an obvious rusted out. Plus incidentals, yeah. I make a motion then to start with the tree removal and incidental.
Incidental.
Yeah, very, thank you.
We're rusty pipes.
A rusty pipe, there you go.
Is there a second? I'll second. I have a motion and a second. To do the repairs as far as. Taking out the trees and any damaged pipe, a rusty pipe that gets damaged in the process. Uh, roll call votes, maybe.
Aye.
Stone, aye, over, aye.
Do we need to make an action on doing like an R P, get bids on this?
No, yes, need to ask us to go get bids.
Yo.
We will, we will go get bids. This meeting or. Is that due now or? I'm motion to approve, uh. Authorized, authorized, authorized project on the bid. It's your second.
Oh, second.
And a motion and a second. Open things, but. R P for their bids. Yeah, and we'll probably, it'll be, it'll be worked out this summer. Probably try to get the work done this summer. Yep.
Selects the right thing or how does that work?
So we send it out. We have a hundred and fifty contractors on our list. We send it to all hundred and fifty of them. And then we just see who, who's one, who wants a bid.
We normally get probably returns on those five to six bids. Pretty easy.
It's the public bid process. If whoever wants to bid on. Yeah, we won't extend it to just three people. It'll be publicly, it'll be published in the paper that we published on. So. Trees on stuff like master's ground. Wait a second, hold it. David, I mean, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
So you've got some big trees there. Are you taking the stumps out or are you leaving them? Or plan to take the stumps out? So if you take, if you take a big tree that's got a big stump on it, that. You're just creating erosion on some.
Really big ones will probably just grind the banks. We'll just probably grind the stones. If, if they're in the banks, there's a viscosity value issue, those will just be ground.
It's ground.
So then the ones that we can't pull will pull. And we'll burn a berry.
So when you send out the notice for R P, that'll include probably grinding. Some guys don't do that.
Yeah, well, we'll put in there that it'll be.
Shouldn't have to worry about getting sued.
Yeah.
You can't, you're, you're right. That's. He said getting sued by going, if we didn't have the right of way, if we hadn't approved the right of way ahead of time, it would have probably been some issues going on. Well, it's been the last two, three years that there's been issues in there and it's not, we haven't been allowed in there, so.
That's wrong though.
I just see.
It was a point. Yeah, it should have been.
I just, uh, I needed another one this morning.
Probably, probably worth it today.
You didn't hear it, Enos, just.
I tried to take a few notes of this going, so that way I'm not gonna type up the minutes, it's not as crazy.